Good evening. Welcome to the Jackson Public School District's regular meeting of its Board of Trustees for May 16, 2017. Thank you all for being here this evening. We will start off with our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be provided by our Middle School Division, and Ms. Evans will introduce our student.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Murray, Madam President, and school board members, at this time, we welcome Ms. Raven James, a seventh grade scholar at Brinkley Middle School. I'm sorry, at Rowan Middle School. We've had a slight change since we've been here this evening, but she stays prepared. She stays prepared. Raven is definitely an honor roll student. She's a part of the proficiency club and the pinnacle club. She's also a part of the TSA. Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome Raven James.
Will you still, will you please stand for the pledge? Our pledge allegiance for which we stand, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you'll stay for a second, our colleague would like to present you with her certificate for participating today.
Ms. James, hold on to that. Let me get them on this side. There was, there will be a plaque, okay? But by you being always available, I think, Secretary, we all have an always available plaque as well, alright? But you will get one. That's right. Go ahead and give her a applause. That's right. That's right. On behalf of the board, we're so thankful that, listen, that you had the courage and the mindset to want to always be on standby, to come and, and, and help us get through the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that opportunity for us to start to say that along with you. And we hope that, from this moment on, that you don't back down, but you elevate up and keep on doing what you're doing. So thank you again. Do you have your parents here or anybody here with you? Where, where are they? Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Got any cousins? Yeah? Best friend? Alright. We try.
You can really tell when you have a-
Baby mama, huh?
When you have a-
Mother. Alright. Come on up then. That's good. Come on in here. Come on up here. We're gonna, we're gonna get our photographer to take a good old family picture.
Our moment of inspiration will be given by Pastor Henry Jenkins and will be introduced by our colleague, Mr. Jared Oppenheimer.
Thanks, Madam President. Pastor Jenkins is in his 13th year as pastor of the Christian Union Missionary Baptist Church in Tugloo, Mississippi. He's founder of the Gospel Outreach Ministry, a prison ministry. He is Sunday Chaplain of the Central Mississippi Correctional Facility in Pearl. He has received dual degrees in political science from Jackson State University and a master's degree in theology from Sywell Seminary in New Orleans. Pastor Jenkins is former children church minister at the Faith Presbyterian Church, former youth minister at Morning Star Baptist Church, former board member of the I-55 YMCA, and he is currently employed as a security officer at North Park Mall and Jackson State University. His favorite scripture is Ephesians 2:2021. "Now unto him that is able to do exceeding abundantly above all that we ask or think, according to the power that work in us, unto him be glory in the church by Christ Jesus throughout all ages, whereof without end; amen." Pastor Jenkins is the father of one adult daughter. May I present to you Pastor Henry Jenkins?
To the, to Dr. Murray and the Jackson Public Schools Board, and to all of you this morning, this afternoon, this evening, I'd like to say that in times like these, we need prayer. We need a God that is able to do all things. Sometime, oftentimes, we try to do things on our own, but we realize that we can't because God is the only one that is able to wake us up every morning, to give us our health and strength. And sometimes, we take that for granted. The fact that you can wake up and have your being and move around is all because God allows us to. But one of the wonderful things I love about what God does is that He loves us so much that there are things that could happen to us that He won't allow. There are diseases that can plague us that He won't allow to happen. There are some things that in our lives that He can plague upon us, but because of His power and sovereignty, He's asked angels to protect us throughout the day and throughout the night. God demands that we love one another, demanded so that even in the greatest commandment, He says, "We are to love the Lord, thou God, with all of our heart, with all of our soul, and with all of our might, and to love our neighbors as ourself." One of the key things that we need to realize is that we have to put God first in everything that we do. We have no power to wake ourselves up, nor have the power to move and have our being, but it's all God. And we have to understand that we have to seek Ye first, the kingdom of God, and His righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto us. And realizing that we live in a world where we have no control, but God has all powers, and He has all control over everything that happens in this world because He is the Creator. He is our heavenly Father. And He demands that we live holy because He's holy. And sometime in this life, we, we tend to make decisions and follow and be influenced by other folk. But I stand here to tell you that just put your trust in God in everything that you do, and seek Him in everything that you do, because you're going to be tempted to do things wrong, you're going to be tempted and influenced by other folk. You even gonna be tempted by your own friends to do things that you know that shouldn't be done. But in the end of the day, knowing your heart of hearts is that God loves you, and He loved you so much that He gave His only begotten Son. And whosoever believes in Him shall not perish, but have everlasting life. That is the promise that God gives us, eternal life. That's something that we really can't wrap our head around or even comprehend to be able to live forever. But even while we're in this moment and while we're in this time, Jesus says that in John 10:10, "That the devil come but to kill, steal, and destroy." But Jesus says, He also says, "I come that you may have life, and life more abundantly." God wants us to live an abundant life. He wants us to live a fulfilling life, a life that is, that is headed by Him and directed by Him. If we would put self, put self aside, put our pride aside, and just allow God to lead us in everything that we do, then the world would be a better place. If we just learn to just love one another and stop hating one another and stop accusing one another and stop doing all these crazy things that we see that's happening in this world, and a lot of that is because they don't have a relationship with Jesus Christ. That is the first and foremost, is that we have a relationship with Jesus Christ. And if we dare to submit ourselves to Him, humble ourselves, Second Chronicles 7 and 14 makes it clear. He says, in Second Chronicles, He says, "As, as, as we need to humble ourselves, we need to pray, we need to seek His face, we need to turn from our wicked ways, and then He will come and heal our land." But we make, we have to make that decision. Nobody can force you to do anything. You have to make a decision on your own to decide on what destiny you want to take in your life. You can try the, the right road, or you can try the wrong road. But at the end of the day, it's going to be your decision. So in this life, if you're going to do something, make sure you're going to do something that's going to influence to make people better, to make someone better, to encourage folks to do better and, and to be better, or to be the best that they can be. Where the life, life is full of people, or, life is full of people that's criticizing and doubting and looking down on people. We need to, we need to, we need to encourage one another, even the smallest things, even in our, even our children when they're in school, every small achievement that they make or achieve, we need to encourage that so they can elevate to the highest level of excellency that they can make. But if we're always doubting, always talking down or talking about them, then how can they ever achieve any goals unless they don't have, unless they have some type of encouragement? So let us, let us be mindful of the importance of life. What's important in life? The most important thing in life is that we have a relationship with God and that we have an intimate relationship with Jesus Christ. And at the end of the day, if we put God first in everything that we do, God will direct us and seek His will, and He will direct the way that He wants us to go, and not the way we want to go, but it has to be in His will. It has to be in His time, and it has to be in His season. I want to take this moment, if you all would, as you sit here together, hold somebody's hand as we prepare to pray for a moment.
Pastor. I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We just need to do a moment of inspiration. We don't want to get in trouble with actually holding hand and praying.
Well, as a, as a pastor, you get ahead of yourself, and so I do, I do understand the rules and regulations.
Alright. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. If you'll stay for a second, our colleague would like to provide you with a, a token of our appreciation for you being here today.
Pastor Jenkins, what an awesome way to encourage us, and we are so thankful. You know, I've learned that there's no greater joy of knowing that somebody loves you. So I want to thank you for the encouragement, and on behalf of the Jackson Public School Board, we want to present a small token of our appreciation for you taking out time to come and to share some encouraging words to us. And all of us need to hear that from time to time, and we thank you for that. So we want to present this to you. And did you bring anybody with you? That's yours, too?
I had got real busy just, just today. I didn't get a chance to, to get anybody to, I'm pretty sure somebody was watching.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's not one person in here that know you? That don't mind standing with you?
Reverend Lynn.
Alright. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Let our pastor go, Reverend Lynn.
Yeah, we got one back here, dawg.
We'll now move to the establishment of a quorum. We have five of our members. Is Ms. Camel on the phone?
She's not.
Okay. We have a quorum of members present. I'll move to the adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second that we're not adopt tonight's agenda. Those in favor? Thank you. Now down to reading and approving of the minutes of the May 2 regular meeting and the May 4, 2017 special meeting. I'll entertain a motion for action.
So move as long as it had that change that I requested from the minutes on point 13. Yeah, that's in there.
So move noting-
He moved. Oh, so you want it, you want a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Questions? Those in favor? Thank you. Public participation for general comments and our proposed policy issues. Ms. Turner?
Board members, you have multiple persons who've signed up to address you this evening. First to sign up is Gloria Thompson, who wants to address you as Wingfield alum, statement of concerns about district decisions. Board members, since you have so many people who've signed up to address you, I'll just remind those who've signed up that you have three minutes to address the board, and we're going to enforce that strictly because there's a very large number of people who signed up to speak tonight. Oh, and I do have a sign that I can give you to let you know when you have a minute left. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Gloria. I was absolutely terrified to go to Wingfield. The media and the way people portrayed it, it was the murder capital. We had no air conditioning. We had mold, rat feces that lined the floor and walls. We had no teachers and staff that can teach us the fundamental, that can teach the fundamental core classes that we needed to graduate. Wingfield was a feeding tube to all the negative statistics. The new administration that came in in 2014, 2015 changed everything. First, they changed the attitude for Wingfield. The administration was happy and excited to come into work. Secondly, they changed the physical structure. They cleaned rooms, they painted, they provided the basic needs and necessities that we needed to have a productive learning environment. Lastly, they changed the entire culture of Wingfield. I was no longer afraid to go to Wingfield, and I wanted to go there just to learn. They implemented programs that engaged our learning capabilities. They catered to our specific learning styles. They made it their primary goal to get, to get each and every one of us to graduation. Our principal did an absolutely wonderful job. Just by his presence, he made things change, even though he was not given the proper support or funding that he needed to keep his innovative ideas going. We need more leaders like him, leaders that are present in their support, present in their understanding, and present with their physical presence. I don't like the idea of people making decisions for us that don't understand or never be in the same atmosphere that I experience and kids like me experience each and every day. I don't like the idea of people making decisions for us, and we have no say-so, and we, as parents, students, staff, and alumni, are not even informed. These behaviors are unacceptable. This practice needs to stop. We need leaders that are more attentive, that think about the decisions that they make, what they vote on, and who they move from school to school. If you're not president, present in a situation, how can you understand the situation? The students at Wingfield are unique. They care about their education. They want structure, they want to learn, yet they are deprived of equal funds, teachers, conducive environment, even the support who, even the support of who represents them on the school board. It seems as if the people that they want, it seems that it's the people that want the best for them, is not even given the support they need to succeed. I know the decision was made to move our principal. All I'm asking for is the funds and the support to continue to move on with what he started. We need your support. We need your understanding. Most of all, we need your presence. P.S., hello, Richard Lynn.
Next, I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce a name, Iman Thompson, who wants to address the board regarding district concerns.
Good afternoon, everyone. Wanted to thank you for giving an opportunity to speak. I'm going to try to stick to my papers so I can get my three minutes in, but the Bible says, I'm PTSA president for Wingfield High School. The Bible says that our people are destroyed for the lack of knowledge, or for the lack of knowledge, our people perish. I want to voice some concerns about our parents and community, concerns that we have about our district and some of the decisions that they make. First of all, I feel that we, as a community, when it comes to our board, don't, don't really have a relationship. We, there's a serious disconnect between us and the board. We don't feel like the board is making sometimes the proper decisions on the interests and needs of our district. We don't feel like the district, and when I speak "we," I'm speaking of not just me, but our community, the people that we talk to and all that. We don't feel like the district representatives are not vested in our success of our district. How can our board members be vested in the decision of our district and the best of our district when none of you are, or most of y'all don't really have any kids that attend none of our public schools? We're looking for a leadership that listens to the people and give our concerns consideration when major decisions are made within our school and with our, within our district. We want more communication from our district on the community level. We would like our board members to support, our board members that are designed, designated for our wars, to support our PTSA meetings, especially out in the school that they represent. We don't really see too much of that. We want to know if you are for us or against us. We want leadership that will fight for our district and not be stopped by policies and roadblocks, but pursue to find out what we, as a community, need to change our policies and break the barriers and roadblocks that we have. We want a board that believes in our district, our communities, and especially our children. We would like to see our board members become more active in our community so that there will be no disconnect from the needs of our schools and our community. We want the board to know that we are tired of the same old results that we've been getting in the past, and we, as a community, are prepared to do whatever it takes to have a board that represents us as a community, care about us enough to consider our opinions and concerns, and is willing to help us change our district by any means necessary. Our school, the district, our school determines the success of our city. Our school districts determine whether or not people move in or move out. We demand that our district leaders work with the community to help us solve our issues. If you, as a board, knew all the answers, then we wouldn't be in the condition, our district wouldn't be in the condition that it is today. So all we're asking of the board is to work with us, and we'll work with you all. Consider our concerns, our needs, and we could, we could win this thing. We can change our thing completely around. Thank you.
Next board member is Cynthia Thompson, who says she has questions for the board. And as Ms. Thompson comes up, I'll just remind her and the public, the board does not answer questions during public participation. It's an opportunity for members to address the board.
Yes, ma'am. And I just wanted to pose the question so that you all can be thinking. I will do a follow-up email with everybody. Good evening to the superintendent as well as to the board. And basically, I'm coming from a place, as a parent, of having children in the district for about eight years now. And, and I know it's coming at this place, and it's coming at this time because of the recent moving of our current principal from Wingfield High School. But these issues that I have go back some time now, meaning that in the past eight years, me, myself personally, I have not moved out of my house since I bought it in Brookly in South Jackson. But yet, my children have been rezoned twice in the district. They've been, and once, well, the first time, we have teachers that decide, I mean, the principal said, Ms. Thompson, "I'm going to write a letter, a transfer, and ask for you to stay since you're involved with our PTA." She did that. We struggled because of the transportation issues, because once you do a transfer, the buses don't pick you up. So we were there, but it was a difficult time. So we went to the schools that we were supposed to go, go to in the next year, and then you rezoned us back, okay? And once you rezoned us back, then that principal was gone, for whatever reasons. Her reason says she's retired because she's tired. And she's tired because of some of the same issues that we're feeling with right now with Dr. Killings. And I, I'm coming now because I feel like I didn't have a voice back then, I didn't know who to address about these issues or concerns. And now that I know I'm coming, and I'm being here, and I'm going to be present and continuously be present in this space and in this opportunity, and I want to say something about the connection. How do you all connect with the parents to get information about the transfers of their principals? Because I'm at Witten, and my, my, now, my child will experience two principals leaving, from Mr. Ellis, now Mr. Smith, okay? And now we don't even know who the incoming principal is for Witten Elementary School. And same thing with Forest Hill. My children were there when you all rezoned us and split. One child was able to stay because he was a senior. The other child had to move because she wasn't. And we went to Wingfield forcefully and crying and kicking and screaming, but even that child at Forest Hill experienced the moving of a principal. Not one time were we, as parents, in my opinion, given any proper notice, any proper engagement to figure out what was going on, why they were being moved. And even now, we only was asked the why, or answered the why, once we were seen in the news. And so once, you know, they, we, we had a meeting to discuss the why. I think all parents deserve that opportunity, and they deserve it ahead of time. So I want to know what you all, as a district, can do to ensure, you know, that parents are able to be engaged in these processes of zoning and principals being moved around and moved around and moved around. Thank you.
Next is Deborah Atkins, grades timely posting and transportation concerns.
Dr. Murray, board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to say to you all, I'm thankful to be able to come to the board, but I do agree with the gentleman that spoke before me. This JPS board, district board, you all do have a major disconnect from the community. And I would like to see you do something about it. And sometimes, when we come to the meeting, you're acting very snub-nosed, and that's not good at all. It's really not good at all. And I've sat here and watched Mr. Oppenheimer fight for the students, the school, about the uniform, and the way, and the way you all acted when he did was a disgrace. That particular night, even the board president was acting like she was the only one on the board. And that's crazy. That's ridiculous. So please, connect with each other and connect with the community. One of the things I want to complain about is the transportation. I heard on the news that you all were having a meeting at four o'clock today, but I would like to know, why weren't the parents, we who have children in the school district, why aren't we allowed to come to a point where you can discuss with us the changes that you are going to make with the school transportation? I am sick and tired of having to come to a school to monitor a class, and my child gets to class five minutes before I do. Yes, your buses are very late. It's ridiculous when parents have to go to the news to report the lateness, and you don't want to listen to the parents. And we have to send email. So please, try to get it right this time, Dr. Murray. Please sit at the table with your people and try to get it right, and get more involvement with the parents. Achievement School District, what are you sharing with the community about the Achievement School District? MDE is sharing information. What are you doing to let your school district know about Achievement School District? Anything? Have you had anything to let us know? Okay, posting grades timely. Principals, Dr. Murray, please get with your people and let them know this coming school year, to get grades posted timely. You give us active parents, but you don't post the grades timely. It's ridiculous for a student to have a grade April 11, and you don't post it until May the 12. That's crazy. We need to know about the grades so that we can rebut the grade or talk to the student or help the student. Do more to get your teachers to work more effectively. Get out in the field and see what's going on. And stop sitting in the top house and not doing as much as you need to be doing. Thank you.
Cameron No Last Name wants to address the board on state testing.
Hello, my name is Cameron Lazar. I go to Calloway High School. I'm a sophomore, and I like to address y'all on state testing because recently I had a problem with my English II testing. So what happened was, is that they told us to bring our MacBooks for, to get Quest Star on there, and basically, nobody called to say that we needed to get it. So when testing came around, my MacBook wasn't working. It took five minutes or so to get to another computer, but the computer didn't have a keyboard, the keyboard wasn't working, and the mouse wasn't working, so it took another five minutes more. So I was asking if like, what I'm trying to say, I was trying to say that is, I will. What I tried to say was, is that like, I don't think I had the required time, but when I looked up the, you know, the rule about it, I was like, okay, well, I'll give it that, because I didn't ever get to finish my English II test at all. And I just wanted to address it to let y'all know that, that y'all need to do more on like English II testing, and how computers work, and everything about that. That's it.
I think this is Nadia on student representation. I think this is Nadia on student representation.
My name is Nadia Lee. I'm an 11th grade grader at Wingfield High School. I am here to explain why the student representation policy is important. My first reason is because teenagers deserve a say in policies that affect them. My second reason is because I hear a lot of things JPS schools are supposed to have, but we are not getting funded. So, the budget cuts and where the money is funded to. My last reason is because students know the truth about the things that happen in school. I say this because school board will be able to make more informed decisions that affects all students in JPS, and also a way to start having the community involving decisions that affect the schools. Thank you.
Dante Student Representation.
Uh, Dr. Murray, board. My name is Dante Moore. I'm a junior at Callaway High School and incoming senior. And I won't do a lot of filibustering, because I mean, most people don't cover all the basics, so I'm gonna get right to it. I personally feel like student representation on the board should be a number-one priority because if you're trying to hit all the issues within the schools that involve the students, why not have a voice, why not give us a voice so that we can tell you what it is? Like, we're the ones that endure it every day. And I'm not knocking any of you guys' wisdom, because most of the adults, they always go to, oh, I've been in school before. I know how it is. No, you don't. Like, if the news flash wasn't clear, times have changed. Like, we see this. Like, I, we see it every day. And so, if it's more than just a paycheck to you all, like, if you're really passionate about progressing the JPS and the student body and everything within it, then you'll give us a voice. You'll allow us that voice. So, it's not, I'm not trying to pressure you all, but the fate of JPS could be within the vote, so just make a, make a change. No pressure.
Thank you.
I may mispronounce this one. Shamaya Student Representation. Shamaya.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Shamaya Thompson. I'm a sophomore at Wingfield High School. Today, I wanted to talk about student representation on the school board. First, I want to start by saying that we are the ones being affected by every decision that you guys make. If you are not involved in our schools, if you don't come and visit our schools, if you don't actually see what goes on inside of our school, how can you vote or make a decision on our behalf? For example, like, in a war or anything like that? Isn't it good to have a person on the inside? Well, it's a whole congregation of insiders, so why not take advantage of that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Micah Briggs, needed intervention and resources to make it, I think, happier at Wingfield and JPS-wide?
No, I just have bad handwriting. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't count against my three minutes, does it?
Yeah.
Oh, great, great. I took notes, because I'm long-winded. Good evening. My name is Micah Briggs. I'm a proud employee for JPS, but the pride comes with Wingfield and the leadership that I've been under and the way that people have been pouring into my life. But let's, let's get to where I wrote all these notes. If we fail to provide the essentials, the basics, if we don't go back on whatever change was made, that I think really bamboozled us to where any school like Madison or Clinton, who lack for nothing, and who have great parent participation and financial resources, when they can have the teachers for the critical needs, but there's no critical shortage, then we have a problem financially. But we also have a problem with the success rate of our students. We have schools like Wingfield where we can be missing 25 teachers in a day, but 16 of them never came to the school because we couldn't fill the positions. But there's a line waiting for teachers to get to Madison, teachers to get to Clinton, because they've made it accessible. When, and I'm just estimating here, when there's almost a billion dollars every three to four years that come to Jackson Public Schools, I don't see how there's a reason why we shouldn't have the teachers and the incentives for the teachers to get in our schools. And let's go a little deeper. I heard Jeffrey Canada, he's over the Harlem Children's Zone, best practices internationally acclaimed. He said, "We must create a pipeline of best practices and programs that give children and families seamless support." We have visionaries and innovators within the district that have come to the board. There are written-down templates of success. We are trying to copy, cut, and paste our way out of this hole that we're in, and it's not working. If you just take a piece of a solution, then you're still gonna get a whole piece of the sickness, and that's what we have. If we look at the best practices that are internationally recognized from Dr. Joseph Marshall in the Bay Area, his Violence Prevention Methodology has been used, has been coined by the Center for Disease Control as a public health risk. Then when you see the videos from Wingfield and Provine and Jim Hill and Forest Hill of consistent violent acts, we have seven just from our school from this past week, then you understand that there's an epidemic. But I'm not seeing the scattering and the sense of urgency from individuals that have comfortable salaries. From 80,000 to six figures, it's really beautiful for your children when they go to college, but what about these babies who are busting the pipeline to the prison system and poverty and lack of provision wide open? I'm gonna continue to teach here, but it's depressing to know that the people that I want to put the most in don't appear to be doing that.
Letaco Towers, Wingfield.
Hello. My name is Letaco Towers. I am a student at Wingfield, and I am a junior. What I'm here to discuss is not more or less my principal being taken away from me, because that is a major issue. I do like my principal, but it's not in my authority to let y'all or tell y'all to keep him here, so I'm not going to. I want to discuss my experience at Wingfield since I've met my principal. When I stepped my foot in Wingfield, I didn't want to be there because of all the gang violence, the drugs, all of that I heard over the news. My mom told me I wasn't going. So, when I actually did go, I was in the 9th grade building all day. I didn't know anything about a principal or that we even had a principal in another building. So, when I finally got to the 10th grade building, I saw my principal, and he was walking down the hallway, shaking hands and giving high fives, encouraging us to do better. What other principal would you know that goes down the hallway doing that? I haven't seen one yet. And maybe it's just because my opinion is biased, but also, there's no one like that in the world like that. It's not many people like that. There's not enough people out there to encourage Wingfield students or any other students in JPS to do better. We know we're a failing district. Everyone knows we're a failing district. We're a failing district. We are D district. Where are you gonna go? If you separate us now, where are we gonna go? We have certain needs met at Wingfield that no other school or no other teacher or no other principal can understand because they've never stepped foot in there. They've never understood the fact that we're different. We're not like every other school. We're not like every other average student. We need special attention. We need things that are essential to our learning environment. And if you don't give us that, then we're going to continue to be a failing district. We are never going to improve unless you give us the essential needs and the tools and even the funding to do what we have to do, so we can get out of here and go to college or make a way for our workforce. We need something better.
LaShayla Yates, Wingfield.
Good evening to the JPS Board of Trustees, interim superintendent, superintendent, excuse me, and administration, and to all those who are in attendance. I am LaShayla Yates, a proud 2015 Wingfield High School graduate and a current student at Tugalu College. On today, I will talk about my experiences coming into Wingfield as an out-of-state student and how Dr. Killens restructured Wingfield High School. When I arrived at Wingfield, the first issue that I noticed was the lack of diversity amongst the students. Secondly, I noticed that the administrators, teachers, and students did not get along or communicate well with each other. This disconnection between administrators, teachers, and students ultimately provided an invitation for issues such as fights, arguments, and constant disrespect to be acceptable. It was only so long before teachers began leaving Wingfield. Once teachers began to quit on students, I took it upon myself to play the role of the teacher in their absence, because I understood the value of education and that education is the ticket out of the financial strife that many African-Americans face. When Dr. Killens arrived my senior year, the ideas and the vision that I had for my school began to be employed. Dr. Killens' spirit gave us hope that African-American children can be just as brilliant as anyone else, despite the many fact, excuse me, despite the fact that many of us were born into poorer families. Dr. Killens wanted to expose students to the world. He wanted us to know that the world is much larger than South Jackson. Additionally, Dr. Killens motivated us to aspire to be Black leaders by organizing field trips for us to see other Black professionals who are doing well for themselves without selling drugs or robbing. Doing this, excuse me, doing this allowed us to value education and see the prestige that other Blacks had received by virtue of their education. All in all, Dr. Killens' leadership provided an environment that was conducive for learning, respect, and overall growth. So, my question to you all is, how will you all, as a district, ensure that Wingfield students receive the proper resources to obtain exposure, especially the type of exposure that Dr. Killens has exposed us to? Thank you.
Valerie King, Wingfield.
Greetings, Dr. Murray, the board.
Good evening.
Wingfield has caused a cross session of change, where from tests quest for quality and excellence, we produce students that are able to compete in global society, we change in negative perspectives to change in a generation. Yes, as like Mr. Briggs has said, we do not have enough qualified teachers. We don't have the resources, and we don't have the funding required for Wingfield to have, to have a positive change, positive impact on students. But of course, we have representatives that are supposed to represent our schools about certain needs, resources, but yet, we never see our representatives in our schools. But they say they are our representatives. How do you present our schools, our students, our teachers, and our parents of our schools without even your presence being there? How do you know what we need? How do you know what resources are required for us to be a better school? But yet, y'all say we have F rating, but y'all don't provide the necessary resources that can help us grow, have better change, have better impact on our schools. Wingfield, all we asking for is the fully funding, the positive appearance for our representatives. I didn't know who our representative was until three days ago. But yet, they're supposed to represent us. They don't be on, they don't be on our school grounds, they don't be on the campus. We never heard of him. You ask the teachers, staff, they don't know who he is. But yet, they're supposed to represent us. They're supposed to be our voice. How can you be our voice when you're not present? How can you be our voice when you don't know what we want, what is required? All we asking for is the presence, the funding, and the time. Thank you.
Board member's the last person who signed up to address you, wants to address you regarding the dismissal of a district administrator, and I'm gonna advise you, that needs to be done in executive session. That's Anna Taylor.
Okay. We'll have to carry that to executive session. It's a, if it's a personnel issue or anyone that you're going to speak about, we'll need to carry it to executive session.
Do I need to wait?
Yes, please.
That's all board members.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. We now move to the superintendent's report to some announcements.
Good evening. Greeting to board members, JPS administrators, staff, and community members in attendance. The first thing we would like to do, we, just recently, we received some data back from our third-grade gate, which is an extremely important piece of the work that we do is really what, what this is about. You know, what we do each and every day is about moving students forward. So, we want to present that information for you. Dr. Wallace will provide a brief summary of the data that we received back, and then we'll continue with our superintendent's report. Dr. Wallace.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Murray, Ms. Burd, and members of the board. I have a brief background of the Literacy Promotion Act. We do the third-grade gate, and also kindergarten, pre, and post-assessment are part of that Literacy Promotion Act that was passed in 2013. It was updated as well.
Go ahead to the next slide.
It was updated as well last fall. So, with this were instructions for each district to have their strategic reading instruction. We have kindergarten readiness assessment that provides information for us to design the program for all scholars, and then as well to know if we're meeting our goals. And then the third-grade summative, which determined whether a student could be promoted to the fourth grade. And also, within that act was no social promotion, that students could not be promoted just based on their age. And a big part of this is that parents are partners. We have many parent meetings and provide parents information on how they can help their students grow, to be good readers, to be, the goal is that all of our readers across the state would be proficient at grade level or above by third, by leaving the third grade. And with that also came universal screening, which we do screening in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring, and we redirect our instruction at that point. We notify parents immediately if there is a reading difficulty, because we want parents to be part of that. This year, we had already instituted an individual reading plan for all students in first grade through third grade that were having difficulty, and then the state mandated it. So, we were already ahead of that. It outlines the support that we provide our students, the strategies that parents can use at home, and the progress monitoring that we'll use.
Go ahead with the next one.
So, this year, our kindergarten readiness test, we have 89% of our students that reached the score that the state has. We realize that this is the score that we want our students to have at the beginning of kindergarten. So, the next slide will show you what we've set as a goal, is that we want our students to be what is considered transitional or probable readers. So, even that rate has increased this year, and we feel it's because of some of the, that we have put in a phonics program throughout the district. We have very carefully aligned that reading block, what it looks like, and so, we're looking to, we want 100% of our students to be transitional or probable readers, and then we know that we won't have problems in third grade. Then the next slide, in our third-grade gate, the first year, we had 70, in the first giving of the test, which is April, we had 72% of our students pass the test. Last year, we had an increase, and then this year, we just got the results back, we had 88.2% of our students pass it on the first, uh, giving of that test. We also have- We also have got... Looked at our data today, we had fifty-three students test the retest today, which... And we had more than fifty-three, but fifty-three passed, and that means our rate now is ninety-one percent. So that's very good. Okay, if the students that do not pass, we will look at every case very carefully. They should have, and we've monitored this, we've had meetings with the interventionist and the school MTSS committee, looking at their... What they've been providing for interventions. So if they do not pass, if they meet one of these criteria, they can be promoted under good cause. Our goal is that, you know, we want our children to pass that test, but we are prepared. We will be reviewing all of those cases within the next week. And of course, then, at the end of summer school, they can take the test, those that have not passed. And then, again, just before school starts, there will be another time that the students can take the test. So we're excited about the fact that eighty-four percent of our schools increased their percentage rates on that third-grade gate. Three of our schools maintained their historical one-hundred percent of students passing the first time, and then thirteen schools increased their percentage of passing by ten percent or greater. So we've seen significant increases in the rates of students passing that test. And the same thing with our kindergarten post-test, fifty-five percent of our schools saw an increase over what they had done the year before. And we will continue to refine our work. We are using that data. We are planning summer school for these students, using the data to design an individual program for those students. And our goal, you know, we'd like to see a hundred percent. We know probably that won't happen, but we'll do everything possible to get to that rate. I can see us... I think ninety-five percent is doable. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Any questions? Ms. Duffin-Hunt.
Thanks, Dr. Wallace, for that important and positive-looking update. When is the third... Sorry, I put a cough drop in my mouth just now. When is the third opportunity to retest? And then, how many total third graders do we currently have?
I can't tell you that. I don't know that number.
Dr. Murray, do you have that number? I think it's about two... I looked at that number about twenty-two hundred, but Dr. Murray probably has.
How many third graders do we have?
It's about twenty-two hundred. And the retest will be June... The third retest will be June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, which will be at the end of summer school.
And so we're able to do interventions between now and then for the...
So summer school will begin on June fifth and go until June thirtieth, and so we will have those students enrolled in summer school to provide them the interventions, to help them be successful in passing the assessment.
Can we estimate how many we might have, just based upon your knowledge now?
You all helped me do the math. Initially, two-hundred-and-forty-one did not pass the first round. We had fifty-three to pass today, so that gives us, you know, probably around a hundred-and-seventy that we're looking at. And all students have not taken this test.
The retest.
As of yet, so we look for those numbers to go down a little bit more.
Great. And as I said, their program will be designed specifically to meet their needs for literacy.
And these are students all in different schools? Will they all still remain at those schools, or will they be congregated someplace for the...
They'll go to our summer school sites. We have two sites.
Three summer school sites, McWillie, Lake, and Key Elementary. So we selected them based on areas.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you so much for... Thank you, Madam President. Based on the information that you have presented, what plans have you looked at going forward with those teachers or instructional pieces for those students who did not meet the necessary passing rate that you choose? Whatever...
We're developing an individualized plan based on their deficiencies. The report provides us with that information, and we're looking at a program that we'll use this summer that is aligned with that as well. We'll take our data and import it into that, and that will be a blended learning model. The teachers will know what... How to design that instruction, and then they'll have as well computer-assisted instruction. And we will give that assessment, like we have the STAR assessment, and we know what the cut score is a good high probability of passing. So we will give that as well in the middle of summer school to see if we're reaching that mark.
Okay. And thank you for that. Another piece of it too is, how are we using this information to educate the parent on... Or the parents, or even the community on, you know, where the particular student is and providing ways for the whole to assist with that child movement?
Okay, the parents get a school report that is very detailed, and it tells exactly what that student needs help with. And then, as I said, we've had parent nights, parent academies, focused on providing parents with strategies. As well, we will send home strategies that parents can use at home, that are research-based, MDE-provided to us, that will help them to achieve the goals. Yeah, so it's a very concerted effort between the home and the school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'd just like to thank our community for their support. Several of our partners came to us and asked how they could support us, and we did a lot of targeted work toward third grade. So this is a success story for not only the district, but those community partners who stepped up. A nine percent increase over a year on a different assessment is a major leap. So that's positive information for our district. So we thank our community partners. Next, we'll have a cap update by Dr. Sargent. A couple of weeks ago, we had a work session with the board, and we are still... Last week, we spent the entire week looking at where we were, and that report, again, is still being framed. The Bailey Group is still working on that along with Dr. Sargent. But we wanted to make sure that we continue to provide you with an update each meeting. And so we'll... Last month, our last board meeting, we talked about facilities, and in the spirit of the work that we'll be doing today, we're going to talk about transportation tonight where we are. Dr. Sargent?
Right. What you have before you tonight... Good afternoon, by the way. What you have before you tonight is our progress report as far as transportation is concerned, what we provided for you in that first column where it says corrective action, a list of actions that needed to be completed that we listed in account. We also listed the status of those corrective actions after meeting with Mr. Williams on last week. It's important that we document the artifacts that we have to collect, so when we have return visits by the State Department, we're able to show artifacts of completion of those corrective actions. And then in the last section, there are just some notes and some action steps that need to be done for any action that's pending or incomplete, and even for some actions that are complete, as we move into a new school year, this basically starts over. And so as we enter, close out this school term and start the July one school year, which will be seventeen, eighteen, much of this, all of it, would have to be redone. And so if you have any questions about it, then I'd be more than happy to answer those questions, and Mr. Williams is here also to answer the questions you might have.
Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Duffin-Hunt?
I just have a kind of a broad question, because I know, I think at some point, we were posting these on our website. Are we still posting updates on this? And if not, can we, to show the community where we're at on each of these items?
We could circle the talk with Dr. Murray and come up with a method for posting these on the web, but these are the notes that I've developed as I meet with the standard leaders. I'm sure we can come up with something that we can publish to put on the district website to let the community know where we are completing the action. So we'll certainly look into that.
I think that'd be really helpful, because I think at some point, there was something that was being put up on the... And I might have my memory wrong for something else, but I think as much information that we're able to put publicly, then the more opportunities there are for the community to come in and help where possible.
Yeah, but we'll work together to find out the best method of doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Sargent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Vision to Learn. Earlier today, we were joined at Timberline Elementary School by Vision to Learn, where we presented forty-three students with free glasses. So far, three-hundred-and-eighty JPS students have been screened, and fifty-three students have received eye exams. With the help of Vision to Learn, we will make sure that every student who needs glasses gets them. This effort will help thousands of scholars in Jackson see the board, read a book, and participate in class. Vision to Learn is providing vision screening to every child in the Jackson Public Schools, and its clinics will travel to schools and provide each child who did not pass the screening with free eyeglasses. If the... Well, free exams, I'm sorry. If the child needs glasses, he or she can choose their very own style of frame, and glasses will be provided for the child within two weeks, all free of charge. Vision to Learn activities in Jackson are supported in part through a grant by the Jim and Donald Barksdale, U.S. Ambassador John Palmer, and Chan Zuckelberg Initiative. On behalf of the district's twenty-seven thousand-plus scholars and their parents, I would like to sincerely thank the Vision to Learn organization for their commitment to help our scholars improve their eyesight. This will have a significant impact on how students perform academically. These are pictures from today's presentation. Do we have anyone from Vision to Learn? It was just interesting that in talking with them today, over sixty percent of the students that were screened had vision issues. So that's a major... This will be a major issue for us, and they are committed to providing eye exams for every student in our district.
That is just incredible. It absolutely is. We should be very thankful to Vision to Learn, because if our kids can clearly see the board, then they will do better, just naturally being able to process the work. So thank you very much.
Okay, and the last item is Barbara Bush... I'm sorry, Barbara Bush Trendsetter, and Dr. King will present... Will recognize students at this time.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, Ms. Burke, members of the board. It is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate some outstanding mentors for the Barbara Bush Teen Trendsetter Program. The Jackson Public School District embarked upon this initiative a year ago, and we are in year two, and we... It is a teen... Trendsetter is a family literacy program that pair middle school and high school scholars with elementary, first, and second-grade students. And on an average, those students are a few months behind in reading. The Intense Reading Program develops literacy skills through weekly sessions with trained teen mentors. Parents sign a contract agreeing to continue reading at home, and over the course of the program, children receive fifteen books to add to their personal home libraries. And so we are pleased to announce and recognize ten of our outstanding mentors. These are young people in our district who are doing an awesome job working with our young people. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and remain for a group photo. Representing Cordoza Middle School, you have Alicia Norrell. Justine Tanisha Jackson. Representing Murrah High School, you have Destiny Barnes. Representing Provine High School, you have Herman Mayberry. We've seen this young lady already, but representing Rowan, we have Raven James. Representing Callaway High, we have Demonte Bolding. Representing Wingfield High, we have Anissa Hobson. Representing Jim Hill High School, we have Faith Gilmore. Representing Lanier High School, we have J.A. Woodson. And finally, but not least, representing Forest Hill High School, we have Patikee Evans. Let's give these young people a round of... Another round of applause.
That ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. We'll now move to information... No, yes, information's item only. Dr. Sargent has already provided that.
Yes.
No.
Dr. Sargent will come forward.
If you'll come for the update on MDE at-risk action plan. Dr. Sargent?
Good afternoon again. As we do on a monthly basis, we'll have an update on our at-risk schools as required by the State Department of Education. Tonight, we have presentations about our middle school and high school division, so at this time, we'll ask Ms. Evans to come up.
Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'll be presenting updates for the seven remaining schools labeled at-risk. In the area of leadership, schools have collaborated with the Office of Teacher Recruitment for potential candidates to fill vacancies. Several certified teachers have been hired and/or recommended for hiring. Principals have visited colleges to recruit those who may not have come out to the job fairs. They have followed through on assigning mentors for new hires in an effort to retain those who are hired, and they have completed weekly teacher observations to support current teachers in the building. In the area of curriculum and instruction, principals have utilized online test prep programs. They have implemented cross-curricular teaching and academic tutorial, and they have implemented group tutorials strategically assigned based on individual student needs. In the area of professional development, principals have provided professional development as specified in their Schools at Risk Action Plan, and they have provided professional learning communities where teachers may receive support in areas that have been identified as needs by the teachers themselves, or administrators, or test data. In the area of climate and safety, schools have continued to implement PBIS and provided incentives along with community supporters for positive behavior. They've held PTSA meetings to discuss student achievement, end-of-the-year activities, and school-wide policies and procedures. They have also hosted career and safety fairs in conjunction with PTSAs for all students. Lastly, in the area of climate and safety, schools have worked to implement behavior intervention plans for students who may need support in that area. In the area of assessment, schools have utilized MDE sample test items to incorporate those into daily lessons for preparation for the end-of-the-year testing, which we are now engaged in. Teachers have utilized forty-five minutes of their daily planning to remediate students in the core and tested areas for preparation for testing. They've utilized the most recent nine-weeks test data and formative assessment data for remediation grouping for students. And our schools have followed the state assessment calendar and testing procedures. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. How do we know that children are learning?
I think the best indicator for how we know students are learning is going to come with the results of MAP. Right now, the testing window, which opened about the second or third week in April, is a long process. Right now, our students just wrapped up the state science exam for eighth graders, Algebra One testing last week. We're testing a hundred percent of all middle school students, so that means the MAP test in ELA and the MAP test in math. We also have STAR final assessment. We also have Think Through Math final assessment and Read 180. So this is the season for assessment, and as those results come in, we'll know definitively if students are learning. if students are learning, and then what changes we need to make as a result of that data.
Wonderful. And are we remaining in contact? This isn't, this coincides with the agreement that we made with MDE in terms of the plan of action for, for our schools who are at risk?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And monthly, we provide those updates into our MCAP system.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Elvira Hardy, how has the information?
Yes, sir. We're listening.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, sir. Thank Ms. Holmes. As you look at the information, it's been stated in reference to the MAP assessment.
Correct.
Correct. What have you gleaned from that information to enable you to, to make the necessary planning going forward with your, with your, with your teachers to really impact the students in those areas, what they perhaps didn't, didn't achieve?
Well, basically, I've been receiving information and feedback from students, and a lot of my students felt comfortable with the test, especially the language test part that I was looking at. But one thing that I did examine was the fact of technology in the classroom that we have. So, what I'm doing is upgrading technology throughout the building. That's what I'm using with my Title I funds to purchase more technology so students will be more familiar with utilizing technology when taking state tests, because our tests now are based strictly on computer, are computer-based tests. So, those are some of the things that I'm looking forward to next year is putting in place more technology so students will take all assessments, even teacher-made assessment, utilizing technology. It's different options that they have, such as drag and drop, and utilizing typing skills and things of that nature. So, that's something that I'm looking at that will improve the use of testing for next year and improve student achievement for next year as well.
Okay. The other question too, and thank you for that, and I'm glad to hear you using the technology piece and done the assessment. As it relates to the current career and college readiness, particularly for science, how has the scores you got back from your algebra, how has that, or the information that has been made available to you after the tests, you know, for algebra? How have you realigned or adjusted, you know, going forward for the, you know, to prepare for this new curriculum that's coming out?
Okay. We have not received our testing data back yet from science or algebra. Only data that we received as far as to help out with algebra and science have been nine-weeks tests that the district has created. And looking at that information, we've always had fit meetings and made the necessary adjustments so that we can go back and reteach areas that we saw where we had areas of needs, weaknesses for students. So, as far as the algebra data goes, as soon as we get back in, then we'll make the necessary adjustments to see what we need to put in place to move students forward.
Okay.
In algebra and science for the next school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, there's somebody else. Let me stop behind.
Yeah, this was, this was more, thank you. Oh, yeah. More general, I think, overall, and I asked the question beforehand about having all these plans kind of in a, in the same template, because I think it's hard to follow what's actually happening versus what's intended to happen, and then who's supposed to do each piece of it. So, I think it'd be helpful to have a consistent template that, you know.
You mean for the at-risk reports?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because sometimes it's hard to follow, because some schools are more specific. There's two different templates that we're using, and it's, you know, some show updates, you know, by, by time and very specific.
We'll, we'll follow up that. It shouldn't be, it should be a similar template for all. We'll make sure that the template is the same moving forward.
Thank you.
One question to Dr. Murray. Thank you so much. When will those scores be made available from the recent MAP? Oh, you mean from third-grade gate? No, no, necessarily from all of it. Oh, the state testing, well, actually, state testing, the window closes, Dr. Knox, when does the window close, sir? Testing window? Friday is the last day the window closes. Okay. And so, we, we've been told that it'll be earlier this year, so we hope by late July, we'll have some raw data. Dr. Sargent, around late July. Dr. Sargent and Knox, if you.
I say hope, late June.
Late June. Late June, and then some final data around September with ratings and things like that. That's the hope. And everything is online, so there's a high probability that we'll be able to get that. All testing is online.
Ms. Hoppin, on.
Thank you, Madam President. And since we just asked about that testing piece, is there, so a couple of years ago, the state changed their regulation on how the SATPs are counted towards, you know, your final finishing product as a student in your exit exam, or your exit requirements. What is it going to look like next year? Where are they at in terms of phasing out the levity of them versus the course grid?
It'll be, moving forward, it'll be a percentage, and that, you know, again, we haven't gotten all the clarity on that, but it'll, it'll be a percentage. It won't be a fail or not, so there'll be some percentages with that.
And next year is the first school year that that is counted that way?
Yes. I think it's next year. Next year is the first year, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now down to.
No. High school.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not rushing yet. No, you can't go back.
Good evening, Ms. Burke, members of the board. Dr. Murray, under the leadership for high school, in the plan, the devised plan of action using assessment data, blueprints, to reteach identified areas of weakness and to prepare for the state assessment. The administrators also ensure that teachers, teaching and learning and student achievement was the primary focus in every classroom, and they ensure that by doing random drop-ins throughout the week. Each administrator will go into separate classrooms to observe what was taking place, and then to provide feedback to the teachers immediately concerning what they observed, and to entertain any questions they may have had. Curriculum and instructions leading up to state tests, the schools engaged in after-school tutorials in the subject areas. Teachers, our certified teachers participated in that, in some cases volunteering their time to come out and meet with students to provide them with some additional resources. Under professional development, the staff was allowed to engage in district professional development, professional development as provided by MDE, as well as that professional development that they can pick up outside of the district based on their needs and what they've asked the principals to allow them to go to, and or things that's been identified as a result of their evaluations. They've also had coordinated events to recognize students that have had good behavior, that's a part of the culture and climate and safety, to provide that kind of recognition for students in what they're doing, and to identify those students along the way. Any questions that you might have that our administrators might ask?
Yes. Do you believe that, do you think that there are, can you identify any lessons learned from this process? We're talking about all the schools that are considered at-risk that might be useful for us to replicate in other schools, just to increase the, you know, the viability of this process that we've gone through, that would help those schools that are not necessarily identified as at-risk?
I think that the template provided by MDE is a, a good guide for the district to look at in terms of breaking out several areas at the beginning of the school year, really across the summer, to identify those things that you need to address under each of those particular areas, and then put that plan in place when you come back for the school year. And of course, you monitor it along the way and evaluate it to see if you need to revise it prior to getting too far into the school year.
Thank you. I mean, I hate for us to go through this whole process, and then the schools improve, and then we don't use the lesson learned on, on our other schools, almost as a preventive kind of measure. So, that's, I hope we consider that. Ms. Sims?
Yes. Thank you. Dr. Stad, in our tested area, the kids have nine-week exam, nine-week exams and so forth, and I would assume that they have an assessment as knowing where they are, what their strengths are, and what their weaknesses are. In terms of after-school tutorials and so forth, do you think that is adequate to, for these students to pass the state exams?
That word adequate, there's an argument about that word, but if you get the students there that, that's in need of that particular service, and you develop an individualized plan based on that student's area of deficiency, then the research is clear that it does help.
Okay. Are we doing those steps?
Yes, we are. Teachers, along with the administrators during the regular school day, you have what's called the fit meetings. From those meetings, that's what they're doing. They're looking at student data from different sources. From that information, when they identify the students who need to participate in an after-school because they've not been successful on the state test, the teachers will have that information to target those areas of deficiencies and to undergird their areas of strength as well.
Okay. So, you have adequate data, and you have enough intervention to help that student pass the exams?
We have enough to provide them with the opportunity to be successful.
How, how is that being received by the students? What percentages of students are actually taking advantage of these opportunities?
We have not had the participation that we would want. Of course, we'd want 100% participation, but for whatever reason, different barriers, the participation rate is not at 100%. For that reason, we have to look at what else can we do that's creative, such as flipping a schedule during, during the school day. When you can't get a student to stay after school or come before school, then we have to create opportunities within the school day to carve out time for them to be able to be successful.
So, is that being done?
It has been done in several schools.
Okay.
Let me check with the principals. They're here, they can address that for you.
Okay. We definitely need that done across the district, because these students need that opportunity, and we, we have an opportunity to readjust that schedule, so we need to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. How many students have you identified that falls in that space that needed additional showing up? What's that number?
For in a particular subject area or just overall? All of the tested areas?
Yes.
I looked at the number today as it relates to the retesters. I would say it averages out to about 38 students per area, but that's a fluctuation in each one of those.
Okay. And so, within that, how have you taken that information to plan in terms of additional teacher support? Is, and I, y'all pardon me, but that support word needs to get a little bit more down in the weeds. How are you providing the teachers with the necessary resources or material they need in order to be able to reach that student? And then, is the model of intervention is one that's working? Or do we need to, or have you looked at how literacy coaches perhaps may be able to do just a little bit more?
As it relates to the resources, we utilize the lead teachers to go into the buildings and to the classrooms, and they will model instructions for the teachers. They will sit and plan with the teachers to make sure that they're covering the objectives that need to be covered. They provide them with resources based on their research, so the teachers can go back and implement that in the classroom so that hopefully we'll have an impact on student achievement.
Okay. You say hopefully. So, how are you, excuse me, what is the process to gauge whether or not this is being implemented with fidelity? To gauge? Yeah. He said hopefully that they're, with the, with the, you know, with the, getting with the lead teacher, that information hopefully is being presented back to the teachers. Well, it's, it's, it's being presented back to the teachers. The lead teachers, again, we, we've talked extensively this year about the rapid response process and how that process, we provide the information to the principals and to the lead teachers so they can go in and provide support for teachers. So, it is definitely getting back. And again, the students' professional development is targeted to support those, those teachers in that area so they can better support students. So, everything is targeted based on the data that we receive, whether it's, you know, STAR screener data, nine-weeks data, term, midterm reports, whatever. We use, we utilize that data through our focus instructional team meetings to guide how we, how we move forward. And so, again, it is getting back to teachers, and we're seeing progress with that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stad. So, we are now down to information-action items. A, approval of food service, staff members and salaries for 2017-18 school year. Ms. Lyons?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. The administration asks for the approval of food service staff members and salaries for the 2017-2018 school year.
Motion for adoption, action. So, move. So, Ms. Lyons, so we are looking at trying to provide the very best salaries of every year for our food service workers.
We are.
And we're going to keep, because I look at the salary, it's really not wonderful, and I understand, but each year, because they are self-sufficient, and as we look at what they are generating in terms of income, then we are going to, I hope, continue trying to raise those, those workers.
Yes.
To a level that is, is one where we can actually continue retaining them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Hoppin?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. That was down the line of the question that I wanted to ask. Do we actually know what the dollar amount would be to bring every single one of those staff members up to a living wage? Which would be about $12.40 an hour?
No, sir. We do not know that information at this particular point in time.
I think that'd be really helpful to know so we know what dollars we're working with, and knowing that that's one of our budget priorities from this current school years is to understand how much that would take.
Yeah. We'll take that to the, we'll address that definitely in the Budget Committee as priority.
And what salary amount was that, sir?
Well, this is based on probably like a year ago, and that's only for somebody who's single with no children. Let's keep that in mind, that it's $12.40 an hour in the city of Jackson. And so, I imagine that's actually not a lot of our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, where are we? Those in favor? Thank you. Approval to award an RFP for 2017 for student transportation services to First Student. Motion for action, please?
So, move.
It's been moved in second that we approve an award to our, to award our transportation services to First Student. Questions, Mr. Hobbs?
With, with this plan of outsourcing, what, first of all, what will happen to our current bus fleet that we have, and then our current employees? We have a range of employees with different years of service and tenure. Would there be some type of severance or grandfather package for these employees? And what is the plan for this with the district and First Student?
Okay.
Okay. We did have an earlier meeting in which we discussed that, but we'd like to have Ms. Miller to respond to your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, Dr. Murray, members of the board. Mr. Hobbs, the RFP called for every driver that is, that is able to pass, that passes the background, that will be hired by First Student. What the vendors have told us is that, quite honestly, they want to hire every driver that we have, in addition to additional staff members. In the RFP, there were certain staff members that the district opted to retain to serve as liaisons, of course, between the district and First Student, for parents to be able to contact, but then, for the most part, those employees, bus drivers, maintenance workers, mechanics, other workers, would be picked up by First Student. Um, as it relates to your question regarding buses, um, the RFP that was presented is that First Student will offer the district, um, well, there are two options. Uh, the one that is, is, um, preferred, I think at this point, is that First Student will provide 68 new buses to the district in the first year, uh, which would mean that 68 of our buses would roll out of service. That would not necessarily mean that we could not use them, there are some other plans that we have, as we talked about later on years, about athletics and special events, but then at the year four, an additional, um, 70, I think, would be purchased, so there would be another 140, total 140 buses. So basically, as our fleet that we own goes down, the, the contractor-owned buses would increase. That's one option, of course, they offered us the option that the district would purchase those standing buses, and then they would be district equipment. So there, there are two options on the table as far as equipment is concerned, um, and there's pricing differences in both. We would, um, hope that if this contract were approved, that that was part of the negotiation process, um, that Dr. Murray and the administrators would be able to, to speak to.
Ms. Miller, could you speak to the compensation? I think that was a question, compensation, uh, package for drivers?
Yes, sir, um, and I'm going to speak off the top of my head. Um, currently, I think our average hourly rate for drivers is $11.27. Uh, First Student would move that average compensation to 16
Seventy.
75, um, for guaranteed four and a half hour day. They would also have a benefits package, uh, which would include 401K, health insurance that they could, that drivers and other employees will participate in, so, um,
And a sign?
And there's a $1,500 sign, a sign-on bonus for all drivers.
Ms., um, Ms. Hopkins?
That'll go first.
Ms. Hopkins?
Thanks, Madam President. Uh, as a follow-up on that, I was going to ask, and, because I thought about it since the last meeting, uh, sorry, the work session meeting, um, if we're paying them a contract for, for, for First Student that includes that pay increase and the benefits and whatnot, why can't we do that internally?
Certainly, there are, um, there are other benefits that the district picks up that are not, that are, are different from what the First Student will provide. We provide full, um, retirement benefits in the state retirement system. There's a full health insurance benefit package that the district pays $4,272 per employee, which is not the same that the, uh, First Student package would provide. So there are some differences there. Um, one of the major issues, again, is, uh, as we spoke in the last, in the work session, the reach, the, the ability to recruit, the ability to pay those signing bonuses are something that, um, is cost prohibitive, is a challenge for us, as well as the equipment. I, I will be honest with you, we have some challenges on getting equipment in, um, and so certainly, as I think the contractors talked, the, the ability to get bus drivers in to be able to service all of our routes is a, a major difference.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not understanding still why we couldn't just do that internally.
Because there are other factors at play, not just employee pay. There are other things that come into play about getting, making sure that we are having the other parts of the process that are actually going to be successful. I think, uh, Mr. Williams talked about, you know, door-to-door versus stops. There are certain other things that will be put into, to, to play that we are not doing at this point. Um, certainly, that's something that we could discuss, but we certainly would have to have a commitment to that, which is what we'll have here.
Well, so do we have a sense of, should we give them a contract about what percentage of that actually stays in Jackson with, uh, you know, say all of the bus drivers who are current employees get hired by First Student? On top of that, about what percentage do we know of stays in Jackson? You know, if we're outsourcing to a large national firm, I assume they're going to want to make either some kind of profit or deal with some kind of overhead, so I'm curious about what percentage we know of whatever contract would stay in Jackson?
I couldn't address that, uh, because probably, the majority of the employees would be
Right.
Jackson employees. So I can't speak to as far as how their profit would be spent, where that would be spent, I can't speak to that.
Where it would be spent, but about what percentage beyond salaries?
I, I can't speak to that.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Um, touched on Mr. Williams', uh, comment early in reference to his plan to, to get us back, uh, in step, um, for lack of a better word. What specifically has been identified through the GPS information that, that we put in? And then also, how has his current plan, or what is corrective action going to get us back in step? What measures will it take to do that?
I'll let Mr. Williams speak to that.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Murray, Ms. Bird, members of the board. Um, we talked about what would get us back into play. Again, I, I'll stress to you that it's resources. And when I say resources, that, that's a main factor, um, we're looking at, currently in my fleet, I have 229 buses. 229, other 229, you're looking at five that are, two of them are charter buses, three of them are what you call ambulance buses, and those are buses that are set aside, we set those aside for emergency, for evacuations that go on in other counties or something, and we have to move those buses out, they're, they're set up just like ambulance buses. So we use those for that. We have, to be honest with you, we have 50 buses that are down. You know, it's, it's lack of resources, and we, we're, what we're doing, we're doing is, we're short of manpower, but because we're short of manpower, we're using the other buses, where it may be a driver out that's been out on an extended leave, that we use that bus, and we're combining routes. So it's not that we're not doing what we need to do, it's just manpower is short. And I came earlier saying that if we came back and looked at a salary adjustment, that we, this department and this district could move forward. And I believe that we can move forward. Um, and I won't say that I, 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 I'll share this with you, I haven't been here a full year, but since my time that I've been here, we have moved forward. It was lower than what it was, and now we're moving forward now. Again, I stress to you with the high schools, we're at 90 to 95%, where we're late, we're making adjustments on a daily scale, and, and I, I presented a plan to them where we will be going to colleges and talking with college students that need jobs, whereas they can come in and we can train them to be drivers. We're looking at the fact that we want to partner with Win Job Center, so that we can get more people in. The resources are our main problem, and I've got to be honest about it, if we can meet what other districts are paying, then I know that we can move forward with this district and bring this, this apartment back to where it needs to be.
So, so with that, what you're saying is, is that on a, on a competitive, uh, pay scale, we are not comfortable with, with, with local?
We're not, we're not comfortable with local districts.
Okay, but we're going to, well, we're looking at an option that will pay 16, so to speak, per, per person, um, but not increase, the, based on the early comments, increase the, uh, uh, the arrival times?
No, no, that, that's not, no, what, what we're saying is, uh, again, the, I think the increase, um, along with purchasing of the buses are issues that would be cost prohibitive for us at this point.
Okay.
But the, but the arrival time, again, you know, what, what it all boils down to, as we mentioned earlier, uh, as it, I mean, we started this process about four years ago, if I could just kind of digress for a second, and we were in this same space. You know, uh, the board, um, asked at that time the, the leadership to give it a few more years, let's look at it, study it, and we're back in the same space. And so at this point, since that time, we've had a corrective action plan that says late buses are not an option. So it's not, you know, Dr. Murray or, or anyone saying, it's, it's, we have to get students to school on time. However we make that happen, it's, it's fine, we just, but that's something that we, we, we have to do, uh, moving forward, it's not an option for next school year. And so with that, whatever it takes to do that, I think we have to be, uh, we have to be willing to make that, whatever that decision is, whether it's in buying 68 buses as a district, increasing salaries to $16, parents understand that we'll have to pick up, uh, from door-to-door, I mean, not, not being able to pick up from door-to-door. If those, but those are not things that we can hope happen, they have to happen, uh, if, if it stays within the district. And so those, that's, that's just kind of what, where we are, uh, with the, uh, with the proposal.
Okay, and so we have, how much in the, uh, the, in our, in the, in our reserves in terms, 20 what, how much million?
Um, at the end of June 30, we had 21 million.
21 million, okay, so we got 21 million, so we got money, okay. In terms of, of the resources that he need?
Well, let, let me just say, we have a requirement that we have at least 14 to 15 million at all times in fund balance.
I understand.
So the, 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 the challenge with fund balance is to ensure that once you take money out, that's one-time money, that you still are putting money in.
Sure.
Because we do have a requirement, a state requirement, accreditation requirement, that we have to meet that criteria, so for us at the, where we are right now, we have to maintain between 14 and 15 million dollars in fund balance.
I understand that, and I also understand too, that, uh, from this perch, that we have, uh, 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 needs to take care of, and I think that as we look at those needs, I think that, 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 uh, balance thing, we can, we can, we can deal with that. But my point is, is that if we're able to provide, because we're looking at the numbers that presented by that, Mr. Smith, man, those numbers are no different than the numbers we already currently have, okay? And so with that, you know, uh, and I also got a, because of what's going on here, got a phone call with, from the city, and they're saying that they want to talk about this process. And so, um, you know, there's still some questions out here that, that to me are, are just, just a little bit more, uh, that we need to try to take a deeper dive, look at this, if we can.
Colleagues, we are where we are tonight because we have to adhere to a corrective action plan, for which we will lose our accreditation if we do not do what we are supposed to do. We have been talking about this for a very long time. I think I probably was been on, on the board, um, during the period where this came before, when we were thinking about, um, there were some conversations about privatizing. And so the decision was made that we won't privatize. We will give this operation two more years to really get up to speed and to make sure that our children get to school on time. That time has passed, and we have, as a part of our corrective action plan, a requirement that we get our children to school on time. Uh, and so, at this point, we don't have, in my opinions, any options, other than to ensure the parents and MDE as well, as we need to collectively know that our children are going to school every day on time, so we can get that off our concerns. Um, you know, so at this point, we've had a lot of discussion about this, and we just, in my view, don't have any other option than to do this. If it does not work out, then we have to see that it doesn't work out, and then we have to do something else. But at this point, to do the very same thing that we've been doing for the past years is just not working. And I would, um, I'd really like to hear from, uh, Dr. Lynn, I thank him for serving on the Transportation Committee, uh, and he has thoroughly, uh, worked with, uh, staff in looking at this, so Dr. Lynn, would you, uh, give us your opinion?
Yeah, thank you, uh, but President, um, it, it, it came down to looking at the, you know, every piece of that contract, um, but at the end of the day, um, it's about our children again, um, getting them to class on time, giving them an opportunity to get to that class on time. Um, and we don't have an option, um, to, to wait or to guess at it, or to think that this might happen if we, if we went the way that we've been going. Um, in my mind, we've, we've seen it, it is, it's not working, might, that don't mean that it may not work down the road, but right now it's not working. Uh, we've been mandated to make sure that it works, uh, so everything that we do now, uh, as a board, uh, when it comes to transportation, we have to make sure that we put the kids first, because that's what we've been mandated for. And I can tell you that even though, and, and search, do, do the search yourself, I can tell you, most of those, those districts that's, that's in our metro Jackson, I mean, they're, they're subbing out. Uh, we're the largest district, and, and we cannot afford to take a chance again. And, and I, I don't know how much emphasis I can put on that, because we are mandated to, to, to get our kids there on time, and we've tried it our way, and, and now looking at another way of looking at, uh, a, a company that has some success, um, and I think that, um, in my, in my mind, I think we need to try something different. Uh, we've tried it our way, uh, for years, and it hadn't happened. So, and I don't see how we can make that happen right now. Even, even if we took the back road and said, well, let's give raises, let's do this, let's do that, uh, that's not a guarantee at this point in time, that we're going to still get enough people to do what we need to do, to, to make sure that our kids get to class on time. And at least we'll have a way of making sure that we have a mechanism in place to make sure that if this doesn't happen, we can hold somebody else accountable, and now they know what's going to happen if it don't, if they don't do that. So that's, that's what I want.
And the fact that, um, the commitment is to hire our drivers, so that they stay employed, because we'll need other drivers actually. So, uh, to not only hire our drivers, but the, the driver's salary, uh, the drivers will earn more than they are currently earning. And so it's just a win-win situation, uh, and so it is not as though we are privatizing and saying, well, you know, uh, I'm sorry, bus drivers, you know, you have to find something else. That's not the case, there's continued work. And, uh, and I think that, at this point, I agree that we simply have to move forward to make sure that our students are at school on time every day. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. And in the earlier conversation, they cannot guarantee them being there on time, so that's one deal, but the other question is, as it relates to, uh, our students getting there on time, how is the, the equity, uh, portion of this? For instance, you mentioned, uh, at some point down the road, that we have a bus set aside for, uh, extracurricular activities. How does the, the extracurricular activities that we have going on now, as well as the other equitable activities that we'll have, for instance, uh, if the bars are traveling, uh, uh, in one aspect, how the, for instance, the girl cheerleading team going to travel the same way? Will this new arrangement make the necessary, uh, uh, adjustments to cover that?
Yes, sir, all, all of those activities have been assumed in this contract. As we mentioned in the work session, there are some additional plans that we would like to talk about, uh, moving forward as it relates to athletics, so that it would be even more advantageous. I think we mentioned that in surrounding areas, what we're hearing in other school districts is that we have coaches that actually drive their teams. And so we were actually told by other school districts, why don't we do that? Why don't we offer that? So that's a, a option that we could certainly look at, that I know in my years, we've never done, and we've had coaches that have asked that question, because, um, quite honestly, they've needed buses to go to a game to be somewhere, but Mr. Williams and them have, they have had to have buses to run routes. So this will give us a better opportunity to look at that, and also work with some professionals who can help us get to that place.
Okay, the, the final last question. Um, as it relates to, uh, the change in, of access as a potential deal, um, and you mentioned using in-house coaches to, to, to drive buses. Have we looked at, uh, in those districts that are using teachers to drive too, have we looked at option for our people?
We have, and we actually went out twice for teachers to drive, and I think the last time we had about seven teachers that asked, that actually had their CDL and offered to drive. We actually, um, have done that twice.
Good. And it, yes, Dr. Lynn?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we highlight the fact that Mr. Williams himself has said that one of the things that he needed was resources. So, I mean, if, if, even if we looked at that and give him the resources, it, it, there's no guarantee that we can still get the people who, because he needs bodies, and then get the buses, 50 buses that buses, fifty buses that, that's already down, we can't take a chance. And so, and, and the last piece I want to add is that, we spent a lot of time, um, talking about how we can make sure that the drivers that will be, uh, going over, um, feel like they've gained versus losing, and we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that, that they got something better, or at least comfortable with what they're getting here. So we wanted to make sure that it was a win-win situation, and, and at the end of the day, we knew that we still had to make a decision about, um, making sure that our children get to school on time. We, we had to make sure of that, because that's, I mean, that was mandated, so that was the final decision.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn. You know, chain of motion for action. I'm sorry, do I, what? Do I have a motion in a second already?
Hey.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the table. Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion fails. Our next, um, item is our, down to our consent, um, agenda finance, uh, Ms. Miller?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bur, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you consent agenda, consent agenda items, finance, A, approval of disbursed missed accounts payable and activity fund claims for April twenty-second through May fifth, approval of formal bids, approval of the disposal of surplus property, approval of the consent to sublease sixteen section property, approval of the award of R F P number twenty seventeen oh four, approval of the audit contract between Jackson Public Schools and Bruno and Ter, Tervalon for the annual audit for fiscal year ended June thirty twenty seventeen, and approval to operate the summer food service program in the Jackson Public School District.
Thank you. Um, motion for action, uh, can we take these off?
Yeah, so, I have one question about that sublease contract.
Okay.
All right, in, in the, reading the sublease contract with BS, A S F?
Yes, sir.
There was a, a, one of the spaces in, in there, um, that they actually own the property, I know they're leasing it.
They're leasing it.
Leasing, okay, because I'm mentioning the wording that they actually own said property. And then the other thing there, there was a space in there for the Heinz County Board of Supervisors to sign, so that was?
Yes, sir, that's proper, that's the procedure for all sixteen section property leases, they have to approve, even once you approve, they have to approve as well.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh.
All right.
Motion for approval? But somebody, I didn't hear anybody, second. It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items A through G. Those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda items, uh, general, Dr. Webley? Colleagues, can we take these collectively?
I have one question about that.
I have a question, but I.
All right. So, I'll have the motion for action. It's been moved in second, we may not need you, uh, for, um, adoption of consent agenda items general A through G. A really question, yes, um, on what item?
Oh, A, item A with Dr. Webley, yeah. Thank you for bringing this, um, to us. I was, I, even after the questions I submitted, I was still trying to figure out where this all fits in, and then on top of it, um, you know, with the work that we're doing through our, um, student support, I'm not sure if it's the right department name, but the Student Support Services Academic Behavioral stuff, um, that Dr. Wallace's team is doing around tools for live P B I S restorative practices, how does this all fit in with that? Because it looks like another layer, uh, on top of that.
I understand. Let me just give you, uh, some background information on this. About a month or so ago, Dr. Murray, myself, Dr. Knox, and Dr. King were provided, uh, scholarships to attend this training by the flipping group. This is actually my second training that I have attended by this group. Their trademark training is capturing children's heart, and then they have expanded that training into the leadership piece. What we have found is that, when you have, um, new leadership teams within a school, um, the first thing that should be established is the culture and the climate, and initially, we have not done a very good job of ensuring that the culture and the climate within our buildings with new leadership has been established from day one, and we feel that it's necessary to provide this training to all of the new leaders that will be in our buildings this fall. You are very well aware of the, of the, of the turnover of the new administrator, administrators in all of the buildings. So, part of the cap plan and part of our strategy is to ensure that if you understand the culture and the climate in your building, if you don't get it from day one, you're not going to get it day two, day three, or day four. So we're trying to correct that on the front end, instead of trying to fix it on the tail end, because if you have toxicity, toxicity within your organization, we all know what the ramifications of that is. So we have never, as a district, done leadership training for the, uh, principals, for the assistant principals, for the central office personnel, we've never done it. So what, this training also provides a full-scale, uh, profile of each individual who participates in the training, it provides a profile for them, for that individual to understand his weaknesses, her weaknesses, you know, what makes you this type of leader, what makes you that type of leader, you know, the body language, all of that, the things that we just take for granted, it's the little things that can basically walk you down, but if you have an understanding of it on the front end, I think it will make us all more effective leaders. So to sum all of that up, this leader, this training is crucial for our new leaders, is crucial for understanding the climate, the culture, the environment within your building, within your district. So this is just a new approach, and I think it ties it all in together. The training that Dr. Wallace does, it focuses on the P B I S of the children, where it's not really for the adult, this training is for the leaders in the building to establish and to build the culture with the leadership teams.
And, and I, I would say it is for the adults, that's, P B I S is for the adults.
Well, yes, but.
I, I would just, my concern is always, is that we have all these different layers of essentially trying to do what we're already supposed to be doing, and so, you know, we have a lot of projects that leadership is already supposed to be trained on, and so I would just hope, you know, we have a number of teachers, both through the association, the, the federation, who are getting trained up on restorative practices, who are getting trained up on peer-to-peer mediation, we've been talking about school culture and climate, and I, you know, I'm supporting this, I've already put it on the table, but we just have to.
Yeah, and I think, Ms. Abenham, I, I, I agree. This is, this is one piece in a, in, in the scope of what we'll be doing, this is a leadership week, uh, we have six days of training, the flipping group is day one and two. So we have a, a very, um, a strategic approach to that, we'll, we'll do, uh, tools for life, P B I S, we'll have some, some work on circles, uh, we'll do something around data, so it's not, this is a, uh, six-day training in the flipping group, and we think, again, the reason we attended was because we wanted to see if it would have value, and it is a tremendous training, some of the best training I've ever been to in my life, it really helps from a leadership standpoint, it's more than just culture and climate, but it helps that leadership team gel, uh, together, and we think that it'll provide the kind of springboard that we need for our leadership teams, uh, that day one and two for our training. So that, that was, uh, one of the, um, the main reasons for the decision to go with them. And again, you've seen the data as it relates to how they've been utilized across the, uh, across the state, across the nation.
Thank you. Have one question.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Webley.
Yes.
How, based on, you know, the feedback you've gotten, you know, to grow the administrators down, how will this directly impact the students?
Dr. Murray?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, um, you can't have poor leadership and have good schools, let me just say that, that, that's, that's, uh, one-on-one, and that's the point. You can't have poor leadership and have good schools. So when you have good leaders, then you have good teachers, you have good students, because it's all about the students. But we have to provide the kind of support for teachers and for administrators, so that they can provide the support for the students, you know, and, and again, that's, it's training. Our teachers will experience the same type of training, uh, for a week this summer, and we'll be providing intensive training for them as well, so that they're prepared, uh, to hit the ground running. So we think it's important for our administrators to have, uh, quality training as well. We have a lot of, uh, we always talk about novice teachers, but we also have a lot of novice administrators, who, you know, they get the keys and it's off to work, but you have to still, you know, get trained, and, uh, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to train, uh, people up, so they'll have the skills necessary to, to do what we need to do, to, to do the kind of work that our children deserve, so that, that's what this is about.
Okay, and the other final question is, as it relates to this, how has your assessment, based on all the information that's been, been presented this year, um, prioritized going forward for our federal programs? Is that, probably maybe another conversation for another day to give an update on, on that.
I'm sorry.
It may be a, a conversation for another day, I should think about it.
Okay, well, we, we actually, uh, we'll be talking extensively about it in budget, because it, it's been affected, but we can prepare something for you, an update for a later board meeting during.
Thank you so much.
Those in favor? Thank you.
If I, if I may, uh, oh, sorry.
Dr. Lynn?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
He voted yes.
Oh, you, yes, oh, okay, are you still voting?
Oh, no.
I didn't see, I saw you.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Ms. Abenham.
If I may, Madam President, um, you know, colleagues, uh, the vote that we just did on the student representation policy, I think is vitally important, and I, I can, I, I absolutely appreciate everybody willing to stick through this process. I will note that there are about fifteen to twenty of our students in here who've contributed mightily, and it's not just them, there's been lots of folks in the community who've really seen this process through and really raised up this issue of student voice, so, um, I congratulate everybody for putting this through, and I congratulate all of our academy ambassadors who are here, stuck through us, through all of this, um, you know, hopefully it's both a lesson in civic engagement, um, but also the opportunity to really make sure that we implement this with fidelity starting in the next school year, so thank you all very much for putting that, and Madam President, for getting that on the agenda.
Absolutely. Okay, we are now down to, all right, so when we are, when we want members, uh, students to actually show up, if there happens to be a game, we're going to need you here, rather than the game, okay? All right.
These students don't play.
Okay, we are, uh, now down to consent agenda items personnel. Motion for action?
So moved.
Been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items personnel. Those, any questions? Those in favor? Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Other business?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question that, um, we started our work group with, um, Mississippi School Board Association, a few weeks back in March and so forth, and we talked about how we're going to display with our charts, um, our attendance, how we're progressing, and I'm looking forward to getting those charts, that we can see where we are, and we can take that visual to see where every school is, where every, um, area of our goals, how we're stacking up, and that is something that we committed to, but, uh, we need to put that into activity now.
Yes, ma'am, and those are the scoreboards, we, that's some work that will be, that's something we'll be working on in our, uh, summer training as well, the data will come back, uh, again, we, we have, um, preliminary data, but we want to, when we plug in those numbers, we want to plug in map data, that, those actual data points, we'll be able to provide, I'll be able to provide you that information, but we're, uh, wanting that from every school, every department, our scoreboards.
Yeah.
And so we'll be able to provide that information to you in a summative, uh, format after the school year is over.
So we're not going to get that until when?
Well, again, we want to give it, because what you want is a summary report, that the scoreboard gives you, uh, a, a, an indicator of where we are.
Yeah.
And so we have to, you know, we can get, at the end of the year, we can give you the attendance for the year at increments, then next year, you know, if we, and we've actually plugged that into our calendar, we can give you monthly updates, yeah, you know, on that, or bi-monthly, uh, updates, however you all, however the board wants that information.
Some of those things, we would like to see monthly, to see where our progressions are, and I know with testing, there are some things we can only look at after our certain increments of time and test data, so we definitely want to see our goals charted out, to see where we are, and I think our community would like to see those things as well, so they'll know we're progressing on these issues, and they'll be able to visually look at and say, okay, we're making strides, we were at this particular point in the year, now we've moved the ball forward, and we have, um, they're, they're, they will be able to see it, and we as a board can take that visual and move forward with our policies.
Yes, ma'am, and as we're framing, putting that scoreboard together, that, that's one of the reasons we shared that data with you all today, we want to make sure that you, that you know the progress. When we get it in, we want to present that information to you in a format, so that you can speak, uh, to the community as it relates to that, so we'll continue to do that.
Ms. Abenham?
Yeah, I was just going to ask really quickly about our July meeting, I know we usually have one meeting, and I know the, one of the dates that we're typically at, we, um, I think a lot of us are going to a regional training, so I'm curious, what, what's the proposed date for July's board meeting? What, what does that say on there?
For July, we're down for July the eleventh and July the twenty-fifth, it's optional.
Yeah, because usually we're first and third, so that's second and fourth that month? Cool, all right, just wanted to clear that up.
I can't make the twenty-fifth, that's a Greenville school board meeting.
That's optional, I think.
That's optional.
Optional.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Also too, will it be possible for us to get an update on our, where we are in terms of our curriculum department?
Uh, yes, sir, we can, we can do that, we actually, we, we received a briefing on Friday, uh, from the curriculum department on the work that they, and so we can, we can provide that for you, uh, in short order, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Also, colleagues, I'd like to announce that Ms. Kimberly Campbell has resigned, um, her position as Board of, uh, Trustee Member, effective May thirtieth, I believe, and we'd like to recognize and thank her for her service on the board. Uh, okay, so, consideration, do we have a, oh, we do have a lady, okay. Okay, I'd like to close the meeting. All right, so, um, we are going to consider going into hold of, uh, an executive session.
So moved, second.
Moved in second that we consider holding an executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.